Good evening, everyone. I am Robert Stokes, Chairman of Education, Workforce and Youth Committee. I'd like to introduce some of the committee members. We have the Vice President of City Council. We have the Vice President of City Council, Member of the Committee, Sharon Millet from the 6th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Glover is a panelist, and he's on webinar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And also Chair of Safety, Councilman Conway from the 4th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have Nina Thimless from Mayor Scott's office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. This is two resolutions, and they basically cover youth violence here in the city and in the schools. So it's Resolution 22-017R, Information Hearing on School Safety. The second one is 22-011R, Information Hearing Addressing Youth Violence in Baltimore City. I'm not going to read it because actually they kind of both go together when we talk about youth violence, not just in schools but outside of schools. I'm just going to give some brief remarks. I think it's important that we bring in all our partners to talk about youth violence here in the city, youth violence in our school, and how we address those problems. And with schools starting on Monday, I think we should have a robust conversation more about how we address that and come up with some solutions. So just from the beginning, we're going to have this hearing, but it will not be voted out because we want to still have more hearings to talk about solutions addressing youth violence here in Baltimore City. We are going to start off with Dr. Santa Lisa from Baltimore City Public Schools, our CEO, and she will be giving a PowerPoint presentation. Also, Ms. Jackson, Shontae Jackson from Monsey, who will be giving a presentation with the combined agency report.
Good evening, everyone. Councilman Stokes and the entire committee and council folks that are here. It is good to be here with you this evening for this very important city council hearing. I will be partnering very briefly with our Chief of Schools, Chief John Davis, who is here with me this evening. We do have brief PowerPoint just to provide some focused information for both the city council as well as the public if we want, excuse me, to queue that up now. As that's being queued up, I will just begin. Should I begin, or would you like me to wait? I can wait for you. Thank you. That's all right.
We just have no slide problem.
Okay. My, I just, I'm more than happy to do that, Chairman Stokes. I just want to note that Melissa Broome from my team actually does have the slides up. It's just that we're not seeing them, so I thought I would.
Well, you can go ahead and proceed.
Great. I will start. So one of the things I think is important to begin this discussion is to actually situate it in the natural, the national context of where we find our young people currently. And the slide that I did have for this section really just shows a cross-section of reports, media coverage around what schools across the country, and certainly schools across the state, in every jurisdiction, not just Baltimore City, were experiencing this past year with the return of students, young people, back to physical buildings after a year and a half of virtual learning and being away from the structure of school. So we knew that everything from increased stress to the lack of skill in diverting and confronting conflict was even higher this year as we returned to school. But in that respect, Baltimore City reflected a lot of the country and certainly the state in those challenges. One of the other pieces that you will see eventually, and that's okay, we can certainly post the presentation for later, but what you will see is if you look at our arrest data this year, clearly there is an increase from school year 1920 and school year 2021 because school year 1920 was in fact, the last third was virtual due to COVID closures, and school year 2021 was just about completely virtual. And so understandably, there was little to no arrest data from those years. What we've seen this year is a return to student arrests, but at a level that is still less than what it was in city schools. Oh, thank you, Councilman, excuse me, Chairman Stokes, I appreciate it. So what you'll see in those bars, the bar furthest to the right is this school year that you will see we definitely experienced an uptick back in arrests, but still at levels that were lower than the last full year before we went virtual for the pandemic. The next slide shows that in terms of our suspension data, again, you'll see that school year 1920 and school year 2021 are really outliers due to the virtual nature of those school years. This year, we have seen an uptick again to pre-pandemic levels that, in the, excuse me, the 18, 19 school year as compared to this year, the 21, 22 school year. Some additional insight into that, again, to give a sense of what city schools was experiencing that was very similar to school districts across the country and state, you'll see in the next slide that our long-term suspensions, and so even though we were at pre-pandemic levels overall, what we did see is an increase in long-term suspensions, four to 10 days, and extended suspensions, which is up to 44 days, increased by 20%. And this was actually mostly due to a flag that might not be as obvious in a forum on school violence and youth violence. It was actually mostly due to increased use of controlled substances. So I think one of the things that that points to when I transitioned to Chief Davis is why a lot of our approach is really a holistic approach. It's not just, you know, how do we reduce violence in the large sense, but how do we actually get at some of the underlying challenges? You'll also see within the student survey data, while 56% of students responded that they feel safe, we are not blind to the fact that that means 44% of students reported feeling that they did not feel safe. And a lot of that really, again, was centering on one of the major themes, and that was bullying, which again is an outgrowth of what I referenced earlier, and that is the lack of kind of interpersonal skills in terms of conflict resolution that two years out of school just accentuated. And then the second thing, which Chief Davis will address, is the feeling from young people of what they told us about the need to actually follow through from a school-based perspective when things did happen. And so that second quote, and these are directly quotes from city school students as part of our student survey at the end of the year, and it is this theme of making sure that when things do happen, that there's actually follow-up, that the young person feels like their challenge, or them even being the victim or target is actually addressed. And so I will turn it over to Chief Davis to talk a little bit about the proactive work we've been doing in areas to address not only these concerns, but to be far more holistic in our approach to violence in schools. Chief Davis?
Before Chief Davis, I'd like to recognize Councilman Bullock, Member of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You can proceed.
Thank you, Dr. Santa Lisa, for that framing. Anything that might talk about school culture and climate has got to begin with relationship building, and schools are very, very intentional with what they want to do throughout the year to make sure that violence is the last thing that comes up. So even when it does come up and we have to deal with it, it really begins with how well a school is intentional around culture and climate. For the last three years, we've spent a considerable amount of time working on relationship building and what that really means. I know last year when I walked around schools, you would see different group activities, you would see different norms in classrooms, you would see some consistency across a school that really spoke to that. As a central office, we worked hard to elevate those best practices and provide those resources and activities to schools so that they wouldn't have to always create things on their own. This year, we're also pushing not just with relationship building, but with consistent and predictable school-wide routines. So no matter where a child goes, if it's one classroom or another classroom, it's predictable what that child expects. And in that way, they'll feel more at ease, they'll know what they need to do in every classroom, and that has been our emphasis for the last few years, and it will continue to be as really the baseline for every school. Let's keep going. Additional to the holistic work across a school is that we had a summer institute for teachers, and in that summer institute, it also focused on relationship building, it focused on restorative practices, it also focused on the social discipline window. In other words, when you are having to discipline a child or when something has gone wrong, how are you doing that? What is your approach? Are you doing that to someone, or are you doing that with someone? Right? Depending on the severity of the situation, using the appropriate part of the social discipline window was something that we made sure our teachers understood this summer. Also, what it means to have students use effective statements like "I feel," right? To be able to express themselves so we know how to work with them, no matter if it's a teacher or a social worker or what the situation is. And then we made sure our teachers understood the relationship between trauma, healing, and relationship building, how it all comes together when you're dealing with students, regardless of their age. Let's keep going. Culture and climate goes beyond those two aspects. They go into what we are using more and more across city schools, which is advisory and morning meetings. At one time, they were not, they were not parts of the school day that were consistent across our district, but especially since COVID hit, we've made sure that there is space in advisories and space in morning meetings to have restorative practices, to have circle discussions, to promote proper SEL practices, and you can see those on the slide, and at times also to talk about college and career readiness. Again, this is proactive work, this is intentional work, this is work that highlights schools and what they do, but it also is leadership across central office to make sure that they've got the resources for a specific time every single day. Also, in October, we have our Anti-Bullying Month, right? That's when we highlight specific activities around relationship building and anti-bullying. But we've also been very clear, starting with last year frankly, and our school leaders on what are the proper protocols when someone does say that they've been bullied, right? There's a lot of aspects and different laws and policies around that, and so ensuring that all of our school-based staff understand those laws and policies is also very important to combat bullying, to combating any type of violence. If you're talking about a holistic approach, you have to talk about extracurriculars and you have to talk about athletics as well. Again, the extracurricular work has happened school by school, but we are doing more and more as a whole district to make sure that one school and not just, or excuse me, many schools and not just one school have different opportunities. In the middle school arena, I especially want to point this out, we know that middle schools and adolescent, students in that adolescent age, right, really need a lot of different extracurriculars and athletics. And schools were, for the most part, on their own when it came to middle school sports. We did a few, like boys and girls basketball and boys and girls track and field, but this year, we are going to uplift a number of new middle school sports. It will be the first year, we will have K-8s that will just be doing this for the first time. We've already sent out interest surveys to schools to begin to use, and you can see the list there, things like cross-country, boys and girls soccer, girls volleyball. And then we'll begin clinics in lacrosse, baseball and softball, and if we have an uptick in that, then I'm sure in the coming years, we'll add those sports. But again, it's about having those opportunities for students so that their whole self and not just their academics are being tended to. Another area that gets a lot of attention is mental health support. And what we've done coming out of the virtual learning that Dr. Santa Lisa's mentioned in the 2021 school year was we made sure that our clinicians in our buildings work very tightly together on what we call student wellness support teams. Sure, they a lot of times have been in our buildings. There's always questions, does every school have a social worker? Let me just say that answer right now is yes. But besides the social worker, there are psychologists, there are other specialists like wellness specialists, there are school behavior, health clinicians, and they come together to work and make sure that the children that they see needing the most support are getting that support. Additionally, we've worked very hard to uplift their work so that families and students know exactly where to go if they're having a problem. I always call out Fort Worthington in this space because they created a YouTube video, and they sent that out to their families to say if your child is experiencing some type of mental health issues, here's who you go to. So they've done a great job with that. And then additionally, to try to expand our mental health supports, there is still a national shortage, and we cannot, we cannot move away from that, even though, like I said, we're having our school-based staff work very closely together for the betterment of our children. There's still a national shortage. With that, there's a couple of new partners that we've added to our expanded school behavior health support system. Previously, we had 131 schools that we were providing additional clinicians. With these new partners, we're hoping to add that up during the year. They just came on board in the last month or so, and I'm sure they're going to struggle with getting clinicians into their partnership. So it'll probably take a second, but adding those two partners, we hope will be more capacity in the coming year or two. I also want to talk just a little bit about facilities. We know that we can do more work in that area, and we are exploring a more streamlined weapons detection system, and you can see there on the slide, it's a very advanced detection system where students can easily walk through a certain area and anything that might need to be alerted. I've seen this as a demo in action, and it is very seamless and very quick. We're also working to modernize our exterior doors and have appropriate alarms, and then we'll also have some professionals that come out and help us with a risk assessment to make sure any gaps that we're not seeing are covered. So that's some proactive work that we've still got to do that's going to take a little bit of time. In the past year or two, we've added something to central office called central mediation. And this is responding directly to principals and school leaders that said they can't do all the mediations that they need to do in schools. And sometimes when something is very tense, they don't want to have to do it on a school site. And so we have personnel at North Avenue so that when there is a very tough situation, they can be referred to our mediation specialist, and she's done a wonderful job this past year. We got overwhelming positive feedback from our school leaders around this, and in the end, she held 148 mediation conferences and 439 students that were served. Another aspect that we heard from our, from our school leaders this past summer was just clarifying the use of our code of conduct. In some of the really tough situations, such as large group fights, or unfortunately when students let another child into the building, we've got to be a little bit tougher and make sure we're using our code of conduct and all that we can to try to dissuade that as much as humanly possible. Those types of serious situations have to be dealt with in a very, very strong manner because they can lead to chaos, and when that happens, that really hurts our culture and our climate. We heard that from our principals, and we're working with them to use the code of conduct appropriately. I'm also going to ask Chief Ham just to come up for a second and talk about a couple of aspects that school police do in the proactive space.
Good evening, Councilman Stokes, and the other honorable members of the city council that are here. On behalf of Dr. Santa Lisa's, what I would say is that, and I would allude to Dr. Bunley also, because he's trained our staff on building quality-connected relationships with young people. And what that looks like is when we build relationships with our young people, they will come to us and they'll give us information that we're able to deal with in order to prevent any violent crime from happening. So where it is violent crime, building those quality-connected relationships definitely helps us with dealing with some of the problems that we currently deal with. Some of the other things that we are in the process of doing, and we're working on this now, Chief Davis's team has already, and I've worked with the Commissioner, and we're implementing body-worn cameras to help with transparency because of police accountability in order to ensure that there is transparency with our officers dealing with the public as they do their jobs.
Is that your report, Chief Ham? I mean, I know you, that's your report in terms of, I know you are partnering with the school system, so that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So I am going to go to, has the school system finished their report?
Pretty much. We just wanted to.
Okay.
We just wanted to shout out our partnership with the Violence, with the Violence Interruption Program and our beginning work with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, which you will hear more about today, and that was the final piece. But we are happy to be here and look forward to the continued partnership, not just with that agency, but across agencies in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to recognize that Councilman Cohen from the 1st District, he is virtual, and he's a panelist from the 1st District.
Thank you, sir.
We are going now go to some agency reports. The Law Department, anybody from the Law Department?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Law Department stands by its report as this resolution being the proper way to have an informational hearing.
Commissioner Harrison, did you want to come up and say a few things and reference to, we only talk about now is school safety?
Well, good evening and thank you, Mr. Chair, and to the other members of the council. Good evening, everyone. We certainly, we certainly know that life does not stop at the school doors, that it goes far beyond the school doors out into the community when it comes to young people. And so tonight, you're going to hear a number of things, how we work in different ways with different stakeholders, school police and other stakeholders to make sure not just kids, but faculty are safe while they're on their way to school and school, and when they're leaving school. And when it relates to violence in schools, you'll hear about the interaction, you'll hear about the agreements that we have, and then you're going to hear about clear lines of responsibility and how we distinguish those things. And so we're certainly here, I will be able to talk about the memorandum of understanding as we get more into our part of the presentation, and then I'll ask other members of our team to talk about the scope of work for BPD, the scope of work for others, as we tell you how we work collaboratively on all of these issues dealing with violence, especially with youth, and then you'll hear from Colonel Worley when it comes to a number of the statistical things that I think you want to hear as well.
The Honorable Walker from the State's Attorney, is anybody here? Could you just give us a brief presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and esteemed council members. We have a brief list of questions that we were provided, and I don't have specific statistical answers tonight.
Well, when we get you the questions, that's not, okay.
Okay. And that's all, I can address those when our time comes, John. Yes, sir.
You are. So the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Services, gentlemen, could you speak into the phone, just tell us who you are?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Chris Quintine, Chief of Staff to the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success.
And the reason why he's here, very unfortunate, Dr. Brooks' mother passed away, so she's not here, so you'll be here to take back some of the questions that need to be answered.
Yes, sir.
Last but not least is Ms. Shontae Jackson. Can you come up with your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee.
Ms. Jackson, you want to come up here?
Sure, sir.
Members of the committee, while the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement will be sharing in more detail with you all via our presentation on youth violence, we did want to talk specifically about what we're doing associated with this council resolution. In the 22, 23 school year, MONC is working in partnership with Baltimore City Public Schools, as Dr. Santa Lisa's alluded to, to pilot school-based violence intervention programs in three high schools so that we are promoting healthy conflict transformation and mediation skills in those schools, and also changing those schools' community norms about the perception and the acceptability of violence. The programming is going to be integrated as a part of the Mayor's comprehensive approach to violence through the Community Violence Intervention Ecosystem. Those intervention workers that we will be hiring and that will be assigned to these three schools to help mediate conflicts will also be working to develop youth ambassadors, two at each grade level in each school, who will assist in resolving conflicts that could escalate into violence for their peers. In addition to the school-based intervention programming, obviously helping build interpersonal skills in the areas of communication and problem-solving, we believe that we'll also be building emotional intelligence in our young folks, that we'll be creating deeper paths associated with empathy and emotional regulation, social and personal awareness. Also to contribute to the development of healthy conflict transformation skills for those who are not in high school, but instead in elementary school and in middle school, MONC just rolled out a $234,000 grant opportunity for community-based organizations for this academic year as well to provide social-emotional learning supports and development programs. I would also share that $164,000 of ARPA dollars have been awarded to Baltimore City Public Schools. That's associated with the Child Fatality Review work that we've been doing, not only with BCPSS, but also obviously with Dr. DeRosa and other members of the Child Fatality Review Team. This money is specifically going to be used to provide training to 501 Baltimore City school employees who are social workers, psychologists, counselors, in mental health and first aid. And just a few more points here, if I could, sir. To make sure that our students feel safe in traveling to school, we also spent time meeting with members of the Fund for Educational Excellence and reviewing their report, Not in Service: Why Public Transit Must Aim to Serve Students. And we found that many students feel the need to be cautious and vigilant while commuting to and from school and to be very aware of their surroundings. The report also found that running more buses more frequently, improving lighting and building better bus shelters can make students feel safer when they're navigating transit to and from school, especially those who, like me, had to get up when it was o dark 30 outside to drive, to ride the bus across town. And then the final point that I'll make here is that street harassment for our young people is a real thing that threatens their safety. We have engaged in conversations, not only with the Fund for Educational Excellence, but also with Councilwoman Ramos. but also with Councilwoman Ramos, about the creation of a Street Harassment Advisory Board, which would include youth representatives with a goal of tackling this issue. We stand ready to answer any questions that you might have about our bill report.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson, do you have a written report you can give to us? Okay, we have it? No, we got, okay. Let's go to the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, Mackenzie Garvin. And real quick, John Hopkins also, we received testimony from John Hopkins University of Medicine, outlining the effects of youth violence, that it's a significant public health problem and affects thousands of young people each day, as well as their families, schools, and communities. And we did get a written report from the Mayor's Office of Employment Development. Thank you. You stand by your report?
Yes, I'm trying to see if this on. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council. My name is Matt Garvin, I'm the Chief of Staff at MOED. We did provide a written report, which we do stand by. We also are included in the joint agency presentation, and we will provide some information on three of our primary strategies that we have implemented to employ our young people.
Thank you. Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation, is anyone here?
Director Heimowitz, yes, is joining virtually.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Dan Heimowitz, Director of the Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation. We stand by our report and looking forward to sharing a bit more during the joint agency presentation that Director Jackson referred to earlier.
Thank you. Also, I want to not recognize, but Councilman Torrance is excused and he is a part of this committee. Before we go into questions, I want to be clear, we only going to be talking about school safety questions. Two more colleagues is another hearing. We have kind of like two hearings, two questions, and we're going to move this along like it should be done. So what I want to do is now start off, I have two questions, and then after that, our Vice President, City Council, Sharon Mills, will be next. And this actually is for Commissioner Harrison. My first question is, what percentage of crime do youth account for in Baltimore City? You can come to the podium.
Good afternoon, good evening, sir. Basically, the youth, I've got it, we've got it broken down by juvenile victims in the city, as well as juvenile arrests. I can go through the eight, there's eighteen different categories.
Let me probably give you this question. The total number of youth victims in each of the following categories, homicide, shootings, aggravated assaults, robbery, rape, sexual assault, the data that I'm asking for calendar year 2020, 2021, and 2022. So if you do have that or whatever you have, could you share that?
Mr. Chairman, we have all of that documentation, those numbers that you requested, in the joint presentation. If you would like to proceed to that so we can cover those items, other, if you don't want to, we can, he has them and he can talk about them.
He can talk about it, but I'd like to share it with the council members in the committee. So he can actually talk about it.
And you should all have a copy of that presentation as well in your inbox?
Okay, we have a copy, but could you just go through the calendar years?
I got, we have twenty-one compared to twenty-two, that's what we have in our...
Okay. That copy you have, we don't have a copy of that. Okay, go ahead, Deputy Commissioner, go ahead and do the presentation. We are...
No, I'm just saying you give him my copy.
So... Okay, we're going to make a little slight change. Mrs. Jackson, can you do your presentation? Thank you, Colonel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're pulling the presentation up now. I'll start by saying that on behalf of Mayor Scott and the members of his administration that are with me today, the conversation that we'll be having with you all today really drills home the importance of having an integrated strategy to benefit our young people. I think that we all agree with that. This strategy is one that is rooted in the Mayor's Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan and clearly focuses on inter-agency partnership. It is why with me today, at your request, BPD sits with me, the Health Commissioner and her team sit with me, MoAM, MACFIS, Baltimore City Public Schools, MoED, and so many others are here. We believe in investing in the promise of our young people, and that will be clearly demonstrated in what we share with you all today. We want to also make sure that their perspectives are what we center in our strategies and that we focus on opportunity in order to really ensure student safety and an ability to drive down youth violence in ways that promote long-term successful life outcomes for them. Next slide.
I can go through each individual number. Basically, the 2021 numbers are year, the year-end numbers. The 2022 numbers are year-to-date, as of August the fourteenth through August fourteenth. Juvenile victims, there have been six hundred and forty-eight in 2021 of violent crime, four hundred and seventy-five in 2022 thus far. Homicides, 2021 is seventeen, year-to-date in 2022 is fourteen. Rapes, sixty-six in twenty-one compared to forty in twenty-two. Robberies, one eighty-five compared to ninety-four. Carjackings, fifteen compared to seven. Commercial robberies, seventeen compared to twelve. Residential robberies, twenty-one compared to ten. Street robberies, one hundred and thirty-two compared to sixty-five. Aggravated assaults are three eighty compared to three twenty-seven, and shootings are fifty compared to forty-nine. Now, in that ag assault number, are the shooting numbers as well because a shooting is classified as an ag assault. Property crime has a hundred victims compared to seventy-three. Burglary has eighteen compared to seven. Larceny, sixty-six compared to fifty. Larceny from auto, six compared to twelve. Auto theft, six compared to four. And arson, two compared to zero, for a grand total of seven forty-eight compared to five forty-eight. And then you go to juvenile arrests and recidivists. There are eighty-three recidivists, violent recidivists, which means they've been arrested for two violent crimes. Go twenty to twenty-one, twenty-one again, I mean, twenty again is year-end, twenty-two is twenty, twenty, twenty-one are both year-end, twenty-two is year-to-date. Do you want me to read all three categories? Okay. Homicides, 2020 is ten, twenty-one is eleven. So far in 2022 is nine. Rape, eleven in twenty, six in twenty-one, one in twenty-two. Robbery is two twenty-nine, one fourteen, and seventy-seven. Ag assaults, which includes non-fatal shootings, two twenty, one eighty-two to ninety. Property crime is three forty-nine to two forty-three and one fifty-eight thus far this year. Burglaries are thirty-six, thirty-seven, and twenty-eight thus far this year. Larceny, one oh five, seventy-three, and forty-eight in twenty-two. Auto theft is two oh seven, one thirty-three, and eighty-two in twenty-two. And arson is one, zero, and zero. And the grand total was eight nineteen for twenty, five fifty-six for twenty-one, and three thirty-five thus far in twenty-two.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So... Okay, are you finished or you still have some more?
No, that was it, that was just those two pages of stats.
Ms. Shante Jackson, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Coming back to the next slide here, really focusing in on the Mayor's Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan, we know that his first pillar is where youth justice sits squarely and that within that pillar, we're really focused on making sure that we are adopting proven community-based solutions to reduce arrests and incarceration in our city, that we are funding violence intervention and prevention programs for school-aged youth, which we just talked about a moment ago, and that we're implementing agency-level changes to make sure that we're shifting outcomes. Next slide. We also want to reference the Group Violence Reduction Strategy here because a part of its work does focus on our youth, specifically those that are sixteen to twenty-four years old as a part of the strategy. Those who are at risk or who are members of the high-risk population seek life coaching at an intensive level when engaged with ROKA, who stands as the youth partner on the GPRS strategy. Next slide. With regard to the home and school-based violence prevention programs, really building out the CVI ecosystem that I talked about before and piloting a CVI program in three school-based spaces, specifically in high schools in Baltimore City, we are finalizing those selections now with Baltimore City Public Schools and investing, again, in social, emotional development, which is a preventative measure, right? We want to make sure that we aren't just thinking about intervention and enforcement, but thinking about prevention and long-term transformation of how our young folks address trauma that they might have and how they engage with each other. Next slide. Building early warning systems to make sure that our young people who are between the ages of nine and fourteen-year-old, fourteen-years-old, have the supports that they need. Work coming out of the Child Fatality Review Team, the Health Commissioner will be speaking in detail about that in the next few slides, so I won't spend too much time on that. But I will say some very solid recommendations coming out of that that have resulted in MONC making investments. I spoke to the $164,000 that we're investing in training Baltimore City school staff who are helping our young folks navigate mental health crises, but also helping them navigate adolescents and being able to differentiate between the two. Is this a behavior associated with someone who's in mental health crisis or someone who is just going through typical adolescent development? This investment in the Center for Hope, really supporting the PAVE program and the Baltimore Child Abuse Center in ways that we've never seen supported prior to the Scott administration, is something that we're also doing. Next slide. Post-arrest and pre-arrest diversion. So while the post-arrest diversion program has existed in Baltimore City through the Department of Juvenile Services for some time now, MONC, for the first time in this administration, is working closely with them to provide case management for them and to also provide eligible youth with diversion opportunities after an arrest. I am proud to say that Baltimore City is only the second city in this country to implement pre-arrest youth diversion. Prior to the Scott administration taking office, Baltimore City was twice as likely as any other surrounding jurisdiction to introduce its young people to the criminal justice system. And we've got to be really thoughtful about what that means for their long-term trajectory. And so we are piloting this in the Western right now. We have trained a hundred and nine BPD officers. We are actively working through the referrals that have been made and we're preparing to evaluate this pilot and scale it up across the city. Next slide. And then funding our grassroots efforts. It takes a village to raise a child. That's not a cliche. It is the embodiment of what it means to be able to reimagine our city for the benefit of the young people that live here, that play here. And so MONC does provide grant funding for community-based organizations who are looking to prevent violence, especially those that involve our young people, for folks that are looking to increase justice and reduce trauma. Next slide. I'll turn it over here to Dr. Bunley.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice President, members of the council. I'd like to thank my colleague, Ms. Jackson, for the connection with the school system, a place that you all know I love so much. What I want to say very quickly is that this connection is so important and one of the things that I just want to share, just on the slide, there were two things, but I want to talk about one of the ideas very quickly, is this idea that if our children are not in school, they're in our community. Compulsory education makes it so. And so we have to ensure particularly for our students, particularly if there's falling in that suspension data. And that suspension data makes them absent. We have to have partnerships with the school system to assist the school system in making certain that we identify our children. That is the only way we're going to avert this school-to-prison pipeline, right? The school system needs help with those credible individuals and Director Jackson is talking about the making certain that we work with the school system to help them. They have credible individuals who work with our children, but then the situation that our children find themselves, we need more partners to ensure that our children are not in the street. Because if they stay to the streets and those corners, they are going to prison, right? And so we see that often with the youngsters that we have. Last thing I'll say is the idea of the, we started prior to my leaving the school system, the Ten Point Plan. Dr. San Delisas, Whit and I, we talked about that prior to my exiting. This idea of the Ten Point Plan is a system that helps us, that helps the principals in those schools to ensure that our children are not voting with their feet away from the school. So I'm looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to whatever it is we can do from the Mayor's Office of African-American Male Engagement, because we know that in many instances, we find that the black males in Baltimore are not only victims, but in too many cases perpetrators of crime. So I'm looking forward to the partnership.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Who's finishing?
Director Brooks, Chief of Staff, will present for MACFIS. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. So MOCS is engaged in the critical work of supporting our youth and curtailing the risk factors of violence. We facilitate the Baltimore City Children's Cabinet, which convenes city and state agencies and key external partners to align, focus, and increase the city's collective investment in our children and youth. Seven priorities guide this work. Increasing early childhood development, decrease youth food insecurity, decrease youth homelessness, increase youth literacy, increase trauma-informed care for youth, and also increase youth diversion practices. Lastly, to break down the historical barriers to success for black boys and young men. Next slide, please. Additionally, through our youth engagement platform, we work with partners across the community to connect youth to the resources they need to succeed and thrive and to create leadership opportunities that place youth voice at the center of discussions and decision-making that affect most of them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And last but certainly not least, the Police Commissioner.
Good evening again. Over the last few years, we've worked diligently...
Over the last few years, we've worked diligently to greatly enhance our partnerships with external stakeholders and to improve the ways in which officers engage with youth. In this effort, we have worked with outside organizations such as Strategies for Youth in order to revise our policies and develop top-notch training for all of our officers on the following, to include child and adolescent development, intellectual development and behavioral disabilities, diversion and alternatives to arrest, youth stops and searches, and youth interrogations. And Director Shannon Sullivan can answer any questions later you may have about any of these changes and trainings. Next slide. And then we talk about key partnerships when discussing our youth violence is a basic relationship that we have with our Baltimore School Police, which we've already discussed. The chief and I talk pretty regularly. We can call each other at any time, ask for anything, and usually that same day, we can deliver on any request that he may have for me or that I may have for him, and as I already told you, we are providing body cameras at his request. Simple yes, and we're already making that happen. Next slide. We work very closely with our U.S. Attorney, State's Attorney, ATF, DEA, FBI, Homeland Security, Maryland Department of Public Safety, and Correctional Services, along with the Maryland State Police and the Maryland Attorney General, to specifically identify, investigate, and prosecute to the full extent of the law those offenders who engage in disturbing and violent acts. Just yesterday, I was part of a press conference with all of these agencies, as well as Mayor Scott and Governor Hogan, to announce our coordinated efforts to increase enforcement of these federal statutes by prohibiting the carrying of a firearm within school zones, specifically a thousand feet of a school. This effort will enable us to hold violent offenders accountable and make our schools the sanctuary they should be. Next slide. Last year, the Baltimore Police Department engaged with youth in many of our non-enforcement ways, including but not limited to engaging in strong partnerships with Project Numa, which functions out of our police academy and provides boys with the necessary tools such as impulse control, conflict resolution, building respectful relationships, yoga, fitness, physical fitness, preserv- 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 perseverance. It's late. Identifying at-risk youth individuals and making referrals to diversion programs such as ROKA, organizing a youth football and basketball league, after-school and summer visits to various recreation centers, and swim nights, neighborhood bike rides, and school meets and greet sessions. BPD also manages the Explorers Program for those interested in a future in career in law enforcement. This program is based on six pillars: career, education, community service, diversity, leadership, and violence prevention. In its entirety, the program stretches for thirty-six weeks and includes training, competition, and practical experience, and we'll have more information about that should anyone have any questions about that program, and certainly we're happy to answer any questions you might have for us at any time during the hearing.
Forgive me, Mr. Chair, we have three more agencies to hear from: the Health Department, followed by the Mayor's Office of Employment Development and the Mayor's Office of Performance Innovation.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Stokes, and committee members. My name is Dr. Letitia Giras, and I'm the Health Commissioner for Baltimore City, and I would like to start by talking about some of the key teams that we have supporting the work being done at MONCIE, working closely in partnership with many of the other city agencies that are here this evening. I'm going to start with our Child Fatality Review Team. So this is a multidisciplinary team that's comprised of both city and state agencies, and we are responsible, per state mandate, to review every unexpected death in the city for children from birth to age seventeen. We have such members like MONCIE, City Schools, DSS, DJS, and the State's Attorney's Office. It is our responsibility to certainly review the details of each child death, but to also recommend action around prevention. Next slide. In January 2022, the Health Department team released a data report that included review of all those city child fatality cases from 2016 to 2020. Of the two hundred and eight fatalities reviewed, homicide was the leading cause of death, accounting for thirty-three percent of all deaths, or sixty-nine deaths total. The total number of fatalities were slightly decreased when we looked at 2011 to 2015, in which there were two hundred and thirty-six fatalities. However, ninety-one percent of those fatalities reviewed by the team were determined to have been preventable. Next slide. So reviewing the data at a more granular level, of the subset of the sixty-nine homicides shown in the table, forty-five were youth victims of third-party violence, as opposed to violence committed by a parent or caregiver. We also saw that eighty-nine percent were chronically absent from school, sixty-nine percent had previous charges in the juvenile justice system, forty percent were suspended from school at least twice in a year, and almost thirty percent were prior victims of a non-fatal shooting or stabbing. Next slide. So given what we know about the preventable nature and causes of death amongst our young people, MONCIE has been such a critical partner in the work that CFR does. They serve as an accountability partner to ensure implementation of the recommendations put forth by this group. MONCIE is incorporating the work that this group has been doing into the mayor's comprehensive violence prevention strategy. Next slide. So this slide represents some of the key recommendations to prevent youth violence that came out of that five-year report, some of which have already been mentioned by our partners at MONCIE. But specifically, focusing on wraparound support services for youth victims of non-fatal shootings and stabbings, as well as their family, the youth peer mental health educators and mental health first aid training for city schools that Director Jackson mentioned, two-generation intervention for families involved in the drug trade, an integrated data system for youth-serving agencies to recognize those cross-system early warning signs, robust minimum standard of intervention for our student support teams in city schools to address the chronic absenteeism starting in the earlier grades, and a city school's data analysis on school-based risk factors as a first step to early intervention, as well as care coordination for early DJS-involved, but not necessarily committed, youth and their families. Next slide. Next slide, sorry. So I'll now discuss some of the initiatives supported by the Office of Youth and Trauma Services, beginning with a data review done by our Youth Services Advocacy Project, or Y-SAP. So this data is pulled from 2019 to 2021 clients served. This program specifically connects youth victims of violence with support services, including intensive case management and trauma response of services. When we reviewed the twenty, when we reviewed the hundred and forty-two young people served, almost forty percent had lost a family member to homicide. Almost twenty percent were victims, or survivors, rather, of non-fatal shootings themselves, while fifteen percent had lost a friend to homicide. Next slide. Actually, go back one, sorry. Thank you. I'm proud to say that since the inception of Y-SAP, over four hundred victims of crimes have been served throughout Baltimore City. More than two hundred and thirty individuals in need of housing assistance have been housed, a hundred and seventy people have been connected to mental health services, and we've assisted sixty youth to finding employment. Y-SAP has also worked with peer groups and provided victim services for youth in four Baltimore City public schools, specifically at Frederick Douglass, Connections High School, Renaissance Academy, and Coppin Academy. I also want to mention our Office of Youth and Trauma Services' support of the You Choose Program. You Choose is our teen pregnancy prevention program run by our Office of Maternal and Child Health. The Office of Youth and Trauma Services has introduced a curriculum of trauma-informed care into teen pregnancy prevention, implementing two different trainings, and to date, we've trained over forty-four You Choose organizational youth service provider partners. Next slide. Another key area of support from our Office of Youth and Trauma Services is as a technical partner on the Elijah Cummings Healing City Act. As a part of the legislative policy objectives, the Health Department is responsible for training all trauma champions, at least two per agency, facilitating working groups, providing ongoing technical assistance, and developing assessment tools to track the efficacy of this legislation. We've subcontracted with Sage Wellness Group to advise, plan, coordinate, and develop trauma-informed care training, focusing our FY22 efforts on the ENOC Prat-Free Library System and FY23 efforts on Baltimore City Rec and Parks as early adopters of this work. We've also provided technical assistance to the Trauma-Informed Care Task Force and have representation on the Training, Youth, and Policy Subcommittee. Next slide. Additionally, the Office of Youth and Trauma Services is also supporting the Violence Against Children Survey. This is a national survey being conducted with the support of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention to collect data on violence occurring against young people between the ages of thirteen to twenty-four. This office, our office, will hold two to three community conversations with parents, community leaders, and young people to prepare the Baltimore community for this survey. We're also assisting with capacity building to support programmatic activities across youth, victim, and survivor services to allow us to gain a greater understanding of what's happening in terms of violence against our children, including how much it happens, where it occurs, and its impact on overall health and well-being. Additionally, our Office of Youth and Trauma Services is supporting our Ending the HIV Epidemic Team. In this role, our office has developed a tailored training on the intersection of trauma and adolescent sexual health within the HIV and STI continuum of care. Next slide. Our Office of Youth and Trauma Services is also partnering with the Baltimore Child Abuse Center, City Schools, BPD, Behavioral Health System Baltimore, and the Boys and Girls Club to support a program called Handle with Care. The Handle with Care model has the goal of increasing trauma-informed approaches to address adverse childhood experiences to prevent future victimization of youth. This program involves alerting city schools administration when a traumatic event has occurred in a child's life. Our team participates on the steering committee in a supporting strategic restructuring. Additional direct partnerships with MONCIE include support of the Community Violence Intervention Ecosystem and the Youth Diversion Strategy. Next slide. In summary, I do want to share just some additional recommendations to prevent youth violence. Specifically, we recommend expanding data sharing agreements to support comprehensive, effective inter-agency data sharing practices, which is very much in alignment with what I think a lot of agencies here have been talking about. We also recommend exploring correlations and relationships between domestic violence and gun violence victimization. We recommend expanding policies that govern and inform how agencies collect and share opioid-related data and youth exposure to opioid overdoses. We recommend exploring evidence-based practices and effective use of risk needs assessments that address child and adolescent trauma, PTSD, and adverse childhood experiences. And lastly, we recommend enhancing and expanding school-based violence intervention programs and partnerships, much of what Director Jackson has already mentioned. Thank you.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the council. My name is Matt Garvin, and I'm the Chief of Staff at MOED. I want to start off by saying we understand the importance of employment for our young people for a variety of reasons, but of course, we know that it plays a significant role in reducing violent crime and improving public safety. There are three primary strategies that we have in place to employ our young people, and I'll go over them now. The first strategy is related to summer employment. The second strategy is related to working with our young people who are out of school and not working, disconnected youth through our Youth Opportunity Center. And our third strategy is focused on training. So our summer jobs program is very timely. It just recently concluded. Through that program, we employ thousands of young people every single summer. This summer, we employed six thousand seven hundred young people ages fourteen to twenty-one at four hundred and forty work sites. It's one of the largest in the country, it's very successful, and it's also a program that is extremely valued by our employers. The second is our Youth Opportunity Program. We serve around seven hundred young adults ages eighteen to twenty-four. Those young adults are out of school and not working. We provide a variety of different supports for those young people and also help them to get connected to employment. At our West Side Yo, we also have the Yo Academy, and we serve those young people who are looking to get their high school diploma. And we also have our PACS program, which is our pre-adjudication assistance for young adults. The third strategy, which I referenced, is related to training. We receive funding from the Federal Department of Labor under the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. We OFA funds. We RFP out all of that funding to different organizations that work with young people that provide case management and also provide occupational training and job placement. In addition to that, we partner with the school system and also Baltimore's Promise to implement a program called Grad to Careers. Through that program, we actually work with high school seniors who have identified that they are not going to college, and we work with them while they're in school to get them connected with essential skills services and also connect them with occupational training. We're also starting a new program called Young Professionals in Schools, and we'll have staff go into the school system and facilitate what we call job clubs and other activities to help young adults prepare for the future. In conclusion, I obviously want to say, any programs or initiatives that we have at MOED, we are always open to and want to improve them, because we know improvement will help our young people to be connected to opportunities that will help them in the future. We're also always open to scaling or replicating programs that we know are successful and strengthening the partnerships with all of our partners that we have here today, or anyone else that's interested and focused on helping our young people get connected to employment and have bright futures. I also want to go ahead and recognize my colleague, Donice Brown. She is the Assistant Director and Chief of Youth Services, if there's additional questions about our programming. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we may need to unmute Dan Heimowitz.
And I'm unmuted. I think I can speak, but if we could go to the next slide.
I am on the next slide, but it is not showing up.
All right, well, I'll start anyway. Mr. Chair, committee members, my name is Dan Heimowitz. I am the Director of the Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation, and I just briefly wanted to speak to some of the data related to youth violence that is being discussed in current city stat meetings, of course, complementing some of the other forums and uses of data related to this issue that are already happening. So Youth Stat has previously included an examination of some metrics connected to young people and violence. Examples of some of the metrics that have been reviewed in the past include data related to BPD youth interactions, including youth arrests, data related to actions taken by BPD after a young person was arrested, information and data on young people referred to DJS. That said, Youth Stat, in part through its stakeholders, is planning to emphasize future topics that are more emphasizing areas for collaboration and problem-solving that city schools and Baltimore City government can work on together, that are in addition to matters of youth violence, so for example, issues of attendance and transportation. Issues of young people and violence are also consistently examined within our Police Stat meeting. Police Stat is held every two weeks and looks at different violence trends in Baltimore, as well as Baltimore Police Department strategies and operations to respond to violence. As part of that ongoing and rigorous review of violence trends, we consistently analyze whether there are trends related to the age of victims or those who have committed acts of violence. When there are trends and patterns involving young people, Police Stat will feature extra analysis and discussion related to these issues. And as others have said, looking forward to the discussion that's about to follow and to answering any questions that will come up in the discussion that we're about to have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, this concludes our presentation. Thank you to you and members of the council. We're hopeful that we have provided helpful information and have been able to demonstrate to you all the level of inter-agency coordination that is happening for the benefit of our young people. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director. Jackson, and to the multi-agencies, thank you for your reports. We have done our agency reports, so we are going to start taking questions on school safety, and the first person that will be asked, and there are two questions, because we got a lot of more other questions to be asked, is our Council Vice President. a lot of more other questions to be asked, is our Council Vice President Sharon Melton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess you took heed to what I just said to you. This happens to be my anniversary night, by the way.
Congratulations.
Forty-three years.
Congratulations, but don't tell your husband.
The dedication that you do, that's how you stay married.
But real quick, congratulations to you, but don't blame, tell your husband that wasn't my fault.
On to questioning. So this question, I think, goes right in line after listening to Dan, and I guess it's a question for every agency. Equity is, equity and distribution of resources to reduce school violence and to help students is important. Are resources, programs, plans projected to eradicate violence and assist students being distributed equitably? Sometimes pilots or programs may be run at certain schools, and those schools may benefit greatly. It's my hope that implementation of programs and resources to reduce school violence be prioritized to service all schools so that no schools are not neglected. And I'd like to answer, just a short answer from every agency. Listening to some of you, I heard a touch of very good programs and pilots, but how are we doing this around the whole city and with every single school?
So who would you like to start first, Councilwoman?
MONC seems like she's grabbing. Thank you.
I felt the eyeballs, Councilwoman, so I made the assumption that I should go first. Equity, obviously, is one of the core values, not only of my agency, but all of the agency partners that sit with me and with Mayor Scott. Your point is well-taken about how we're choosing where we're doing pilots, how long those pilots are lasting, and how quickly we're doing evaluation to account for the need to scale across the city. I'll speak just briefly about the school-based violence intervention pilot that we're currently working on with Baltimore City Public Schools in ways that I hope will demonstrate that we're being thoughtful about equity. We aren't randomly choosing a school. A rubric has been established to determine where the need is for this sort of program, based on levels of violence, based on a willingness of community members to partner, based on space allocation in the building, in order to be able to do that, based on a whole host of factors that I'm willing to share with you that MONC and BCPSS are working through together to ensure that these aren't just favorite schools, if you will. After that pilot is completed, it is our intention to scale exponentially so that we can get across the entire city. I would also say that this community-based grant that MONC has rolled out around social emotional learning complements the work that's already happening at BCPSS. Dr. Santalisa's put the blueprint for schools in place many, many moons ago, and you heard her and her administration members speak directly to the work that's happening there. And so we're making sure that we are, to the extent possible, employing both preventative and interventive methods so that we can spread across the entire school system as quickly as possible, and I'm happy to have a partner agency jump in here.
Director Jackson, I think, again, that is absolutely the process that we have to have. I just shared with Davon Love that we have excellent children in all of our schools, but we have to go through the hard work and go to the what's so-called difficult schools, right? Because they have a myriad of all of the issues. And when we collaborate as a community, a school system, and we address school by school, then we can deal with that replication. So I think that's very, very important. I think that's a great skill. I'm looking forward to it. I'm looking forward also to what school we're going to select based on the rubric.
My apologies, I clearly selected the wrong seat for the evening. The other piece, I think, Councilwoman, and let me just say happy anniversary. The other piece I think is really important is that equity does not mean same. Equity means filling the need, right? Addressing the need proportionate to where the need is, right? And being proximate to where the need is. And I think one of the things that you just heard from Dr. Bunley is that actually, it's not as if there's like violence racking every single school in Baltimore City equally, right? Like, it's not, it's not that way. And so part of what we do, and I think, you know, you heard Director Guy say this as well, that one of the things we're looking at is the data, right? So the data dictates kind of where the greatest need is, and an equitable response to that is to say, if this school has more challenge, then that should be the school that we address first or sooner. If we were to do every school equally, it would mean, and we can name schools in every neighborhood that have less violence, right? They just, the makeup of that school and a variety of factors render that school not as high up the list. So I think the real courageous thing that we are doing alongside our partners, and I think it's significant that you've heard from this from other people, is that we're going where the need is, not just painting everybody with the same brush. So I did want to bring that point up and also emphasize this point that it's data-driven. Like, that suspension data is not the same across every school. In some schools, it's higher. In some schools, it's lower. And that's really the equity frame that we're using alongside our partners to determine where we go.
Just want to say that there are some students that live in very impoverished areas but go to, you know, they catch the bus and go to school like Poly or Western or City, but then they have to go back to their community. So it's, how, you know, could you address that?
Well, and I think that part of what you heard, and I think what was reaffirming as I sat listening to my colleagues present, is that it really is a holistic approach. And so to your point, when we talk about, when we use terms, and we all do, and we use terms like "school violence," it conjures up this image that like all the violence is happening in a hallway, right? That is very different, to your point, Councilwoman, right? Like, it's, that is different than I am getting on the bus at the crack of dawn, right? And I might be concerned about sexual harassment on a bus, like real stories. I could be, you know, concerned about the walk home. And so I think the approach that I would say Baltimore is actually ahead of the curve in addressing as a city is saying it's not one place, right? It's not one place that violence happens. So when we say "school violence," it's not just fights breaking out in a cafeteria. It is the violence that young people experience in their communities, in their neighborhoods, the way that they address conflict, and the conflict on the corner looks different than sometimes, right? The conflict that I might have with somebody, you know, who took something from me in my math class. So the piece to me that's the strength in this is being able to get to much more narrow definitions that sometimes belie the use of terms like "school violence," right? Or "youth violence." Well, what exactly do we mean? And I think that for me, leading the school system, the piece that's been the most beneficial is the very in-depth nuanced approach that my partners and other agencies bring to the table, and I think, I think it behooves all of us to really continue to use that kind of complex set of tools to look at this. But, you know, sometimes when we say "school violence," it creates just one factor. When you've heard tonight, there are multiple things that are impacting our young people.
Thank you for that clarity. You might want to stay there for the second question.
Madam CEO, if you'd like to have a seat here so you won't be bouncing when you finish.
Appreciate it. Mental health counseling is important, especially for helping students build relationships, and social workers help students manage their mental health. Are there any plans to add more social workers or add more hours? Or, you know, how, how many social workers are there in schools? Could you just kind of go through?
Before you respond, Madam CEO, Council Vice President, that's your second question, right?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
So a couple of things I'll reference on that is that city schools, even before we faced the challenges of the pandemic, committed at least four years ago to saying, which had not been said before, right? That we're going to centrally commit that every school has a minimum of one full-time social worker. The addition of both federal funds, state funds, city funds, and frankly, the implementation of the blueprint that a lot of folks in this room and outside of this room advocated for mean that we are now beginning to be able to right-size and add additional positions because there are some schools, if you take a large school like Patterson High School, where I visited this morning, one social worker means something very different at Patterson High School, right? Than it does, say, at a small elementary school like Callaway that has just over two hundred students. So part of that right-sizing we're doing, again, with that reference to equity that I spoke to earlier, is saying, you know, one in every school, one social worker in every school is a nice way to kind of set the bet, you know, the foundation. The work we're doing now is adding. I think the other piece is recognizing that there is a national shortage in mental health professionals, and I have to keep saying that. We can add the FTEs. We can, and we have done that. We've done that with Kerwin dollars. We've done that with federal dollars and state and local dollars. But we also have to hire them. I will tell you personally, as a mother, two of the guidance counselors, and these were full counselors and social workers at my own daughter's schools, have left within the last year to open their private practice because the reality is that the need nationally in every zip code outstrips what the supply looks like. So part of why we have been partnering, as Chief Davis referenced earlier, with community-based mental health organizations is, one, these are the folks from our community that are close, in closest proximity to our young people, and, two, we can't find enough, for example, school psychologists to fill the need within schools. I think we are doing, and you heard some of that tonight, the work with teachers and principals, but, you know, the hard truth is, and people don't like to say it, it is hard enough, being a third-grade teacher, trying to get everybody to read, to then now expect them to reflect all of the training that goes into being a mental health professional. And so at some point, we have to say, schools are schools, right? And so we are going to add those FTEs of professionals. We are going to train our educators, but this is part of why you see the collaboration going on, because I do think we're in dangerous territory if we are asking school-based educators with masters in reading degrees to now like discern where trauma goes from being, you know, let's get you into another activity versus real trauma, and I like to differentiate between the two, that actually needs clinical support. And so part of what we are doing is adding those professionals, working with community-based organizations, but I do have to protect educators in that if your trade is science teaching, it is not fair for me to also ask you to do a psychological evaluation of a young person who flipped over a desk. That's unfair, and so part of why we need the community approach that we are using is to make sure that trained professionals who actually can differentiate between trauma, and, you know, I like to say to young people, look, yes, we have trauma, right? But there, there's some pain that actually kids say having a real art class helps, right? Not everything requires a clinical, you know, a clinician to be able to address it. And so our main task is enrich learning opportunities, using dollars well to provide things for kids that they didn't have, and we will continue to add those positions. But, you know, the reality is, we've got to think, and we are thinking of more creative ways of working with our community partners to be able to provide some of those services.
Thank you for that clarification, and partnerships are important.
They are.
Am I able to add one thing? Echo everything Dr. Santalisa said. We certainly see the same thing in terms of shortage in nurses, but referring back to that CFR, Child Fatality Review Report, we found that about sixty-two percent of all of those children that were victims of homicide had some mental health engagement. So, so again, as noted, we knew pre-pandemic that this was a significant need, and as such, in partnership with MONC, that's where that ARPA funding for the mental health first aid for school staff comes in, and partnering with city schools, partnering with MONC, and just to make sure that that happens, right? That while it's certainly not, you know, a teacher's responsibility, but making sure that they feel equipped and making sure that the training is culturally competent. So certainly, one of the things that we've often heard with some of our school-based groups is that are the people who are there supporting our students actually culturally competent and the right people to be there supporting those students? So we, again, continue to work closely with city schools and MONC to encourage that.
Thank you. Thank you for that added information. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I just want to recognize Sophia G. from the Mayor's Office. Our next councilperson who have two questions. Councilman Conway.
Three questions.
Chairman Conway, who chairs the safety and on the council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it, and I would just want to thank you guys for the presentation. It was really, really helpful. Commissioner DeRosa, I appreciated some of the data pieces that you put up there, and it kind of got me thinking and wondering about how we're thinking about the pipeline. Specifically, there was just Slide, Slide twenty-one and Slide twenty-four that talked a little bit about absenteeism in schools, quoting that eighty-nine percent of the forty-five youth victims from 2016 to 2020 were chronically absent from school, and then from 2019 and 2021, oh, no, it doesn't have it on that. So it's just Slide twenty-one. I thought that was really, really interesting, and I was curious, what do we do when we find those instances? And I guess this is a question for Dr. Santalisa. What do we do when those, we see these instances? Do we share any of that information with other partners like MONC or MONC and, I guess, Director Heimowitz? Do we crunch this data and use this as an early warning sign to begin working with these young people? And are there any best practices identifying these young people? Are there any best practices to get these young people back into school? Resources that we can give to them or resources that we can provide to their families to close that gap?
Well, I will start, but there are certainly, you know, I have colleagues here, both from MONC and the Health Department. I will say that one of the most illuminating elements of the Child Fatality Review is the ability to look at the intersection of the warning signs to say, where in the process did we miss an opportunity, frankly, to intervene and possibly, not in every case, but possibly actually save a young person's life, right? With a different level of intervention. That's been very illuminating, I can speak for the, for the school system, in saying those child fatality reviews have allowed us to have a mirror into some of those same data points and what the intersections of those data points are. I think the work that the mayor has done, again, which I know folks from, from the Mayor's Office can speak to, but the mayor's advocacy for more aligned data, right? We all had pots of data sitting in different areas within our own agency, and so the access to that was frankly challenging, right? It required picking up a phone, which in this day and age is really not expedient. I think because what we now have due to legislation, due to the mayor's advocacy, is the ability to now actually align data points and have warning systems and flags, and I think that the work, again, that MONC and the Child Fatality Review Team have really opened up is the opportunity to say, okay, now that we have this data system from a school district perspective- is the opportunity to say, okay, now that we have this data system from a school district perspective, what are the other pieces that we had been missing that now we need to have frankly a more robust response to? And I can, you know, speak for us as members of those teams. I don't know if anybody else would like to, would like to speak to that as well.
No, I mean, I, I completely agree with Dr. Santalisis. Um, you know, again, I think the data from this report is, is very similar to data from older reports, right? So chronic absenteeism, histories of previous non-fatal shootings and stabbings. We've seen that consistently. Um, where it has been challenging is, is making sure that, that everyone has the appropriate level of access to that data in order to intervene. Um, obviously, you know, in, in Child Fatality Review, it's, it's post-mortem. And so it's after the fact, you get it for that one particular person. But we do know that there are, there are risk factors that, that intersect. And so I think part of us even bolstering support of the student support teams, right? Is to be able to identify those children that are, that are chronically absent since we know that that appears to be, you know, a factor. Um, I, I am hopeful that the youth data hub that, you know, the administration advocated for will help with, with revealing even more of that data more broadly, um, so that we'll continue to work together through CFR and, and certainly with MONC's support to identify where to place those interventions based on what the data is telling us.
And Mr. Chair, just to kind of follow up on, on that question, it's along the same lines, did, are there best practices for helping young people get back into school? Um, and as we disaggregate that data, you know, what are we finding as the causes for absenteeism? Uh, and, and how can other city agencies help address those issues? I know MONC has a number of programs that provide services for young people. Some of them especially geared at getting kids back into school, um, like ROKA. But what, what do we know by way of the data that we currently have?
Yes, and I mean, I will say we have seen a spike, um, back. And not that chronic absenteeism certainly was a, a challenge pre-pandemic, but we're seeing an increase in chronic absenteeism this past year of 20%. Um, so when the rate was already in the high twenties, to have a 20% increase means that, that it is, um, you know, it's, you can say it's a crisis, it's an emergency, but it, it is a challenge. So part of what we, um, part of what we have done is as part of this relationship piece, which, you know, can sound kind of fuzzy if you're not in the weeds. Um, what we know is that young people who ha- can identify at least one caring adult who is invested in them, right? Who knows them, right? That there is less of a likelihood that they are going to fall away from school. Um, and one of the profile indicators of that is chronic absenteeism. Um, and so that's at a very basic level from just what everybody can do regardless of where you are in the school system. We do see trends, right? And we know, for example, that there are larger numbers of, of young people, uh, particularly adolescents, who left during the pandemic to go to work. And they found out, quite frankly, I can make money. People are hiring, everybody talks about various elements of a quote, "great resignation." Well, young people found out they could find jobs and many of them went to do that. What that has pushed us to do within the school system, again, something that we knew we needed to do, but the urgency, and I think the urgency about being creative, for example, with school schedules. And, um, uh, inter- you know, yes, internships, but opportunities for young people to go to school and to make money in more flexible time and place. I guess that's the be- best way to put it, right? What are different ways beyond just the regular school day that allow young people to connect? And then we also know that there are a lot of health drivers behind chronic absenteeism. There are young people who are caring for ill adults, young people who frankly are serving as adults in the family because of other intersections of, of need and in a number of cases, crisis. Um, so, you know, if somebody has to go to work because somebody else is sick, um, tag, you're it, right? If you're over a certain age, you're the one that stays either with the sick family member um, or who is, is the one who helps younger siblings. So there are real-life challenges. Chronic absenteeism is not just kids don't want to go to school, right? There are a lot of life factors that intersect. And I think, um, that there's also the place, and we know this, and you know, Commissioner Harrison, um, and, and us talk about it frequently, when young people are not in school, right? This is the reason why Chief Davis referenced, um, our investment in sports. And people might say, "Sports, chronic absenteeism." What does that mean? Well, I will tell you as a former middle school educator, early adolescent, the early adolescent brain is the second biggest spike, right? In terms of growth and development, right? During that childhood period. And we know that what you practice and do in middle grades is more likely to dictate what you practice and do when you get to high school. So if you practice graffiti, if you practice petty crime in sixth grade, instead of practicing lacrosse or practicing debate, you are more likely to then engage in those activities as you get older. So the other piece that we're doing is we're connecting the investments in why kids want to go to school, uh, why kids want to be in school, and know that that's actually a deterrent. So somebody sees the rain, real stories, um, even from when I was teaching, I see that it's raining, not sure I want to tackle a crazy transportation system, but you know what? I want to play trumpet this afternoon. And that's enough to have me wait in the rain for a bus that might not come, not because they had Ms. Brooke and Santalisis for Humanities, because I taught middle school, um, but because they wanted to get to the trumpet, right? And so it is a holistic approach to chronic absenteeism, but we are definitely looking at the data. We had summer, um, we've, we've invested some of the additional dollars in more attendance monitors, more outreach to family, our family and community engagement specialists who can identify when is it a larger family challenge that's driving the chronic absenteeism. Sorry, I didn't know how long you wanted me to go on, but.
Oh, no, that, that is all phenomenal. I, I think, um, really helpful in helping me grasp, uh, where some of our opportunities to intervene are for young people who are not coming to school. I, I, I'm, I'm really curious for, for, I'm not sure if this is something MONC would be involved in or, um, uh, offices of Children, Family Success. But I, I know, for instance, ROKA, um, they're, they're working with young people 16 to 24. Uh, if you're younger than 16, we kind of miss you. Um, and, but those kids who were 14, 15, who are not going to school, uh, or even younger sometimes, we want to be able to get to them. And I, I wonder sort of where that responsibility falls. I'm sure, of course, this school system is doing everything it can in its power, but, um, knowing that we have issues across the board and certainly everyone is working together to resolve these issues, I would love to see a more concerted effort or using this sort of collective effort, probably is a better way to put it, to work on that early intervention. Um, and I think, uh, Director, um, Commissioner DeRosa, you, you mentioned earlier that early absenteeism is an early indicator that they're going to be chronically absent later on and therefore, as we see from this data, more likely to be victims of violent crimes. So, um, just appreciate you all, and, um, I, I hope we can all begin to think about certainly that piece. It looks like one of the main threads through all of this, both for victims, and I wouldn't be surprised for perpetrators as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I just also want to mention that the Fire Department and Deputy Leach also submitted their reports also. Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Um, and following up on, um, Chair Conway's, um, questions related to absenteeism. Um, Dr. Santalise, what is the process of truancy, um, in the city? Are youth held accountable, are parents held accountable? Um, given that it's such a significant driver of youth violence in the city, I'm wondering what we are doing to hold whomever accountable for, um, our youth and young adults that are not going into school? And, you know, just for the record, I'm not saying that it has to be punitive, but given that our, our youth and young adults are not in school, we have to ask the question, why they are not in school? And how do we get them back into school in a way that really presses on not allowing them to make the decision? But also for the greater good and the greater good of their entire, their entirety of their life.
Um, and, and Chief Davis might have a little bit on this because what we're seeing is, um, a, a bit of a shift in terms of that accountability point, uh, from where it was probably a couple of years ago to now. Chief, are you over there? Um, one thing I, I will say, um, though.
Chief, can you come up to the podium? Thank you.
One thing I will say is that it is complex, right? So, and I, I go back to the example of like just health needs at a home, right? That's not necessarily a parent saying it's okay for my child to, to miss school, but there might be another need if there's homelessness. And, you know, Dr. Bunley is really good about this in his work. Like what else is going on in the life of a child? But I think in terms of the truancy piece, Chief, if you could just speak a little bit on some of the shifts we're seeing in that.
I mean, from a school perspective, there is always initial outreach such as phone calls, but it eventually comes to the point where you have to have some type of student support team effort to bring the family in and try to figure out what the deal is. Um, we do get to the point of taking, um, families to truancy court. Um, we process hundreds of them throughout the year. Variability on if it's successful or not, and it is, it is sometimes a very tough and confrontational process. But it really, again, starts with the school, it starts with outreach. A lot of times when we get with, to high school students and they have began to disengage, we have kind of a separate process where we bring them into the re-engagement center at North Avenue and have a much longer conversation with a social worker or a clinician around what would be your best next step. Um, it might be the Youth Opportunity Academy, right? It might be going back to your neighborhood high school. It really depends what it is, and we try to re-engage them in that way. So it's a little bit dependent on the age level, um, but it does start at the school and eventually it kind of escalates from there.
So I appreciate that. My, my line of questioning to that question, I mean, my, yeah, my line of questioning to that inquiry really goes on par of we are seeing so many students that are not going into school. And so I question the effectiveness of either program, either at the middle school level or the high school level. Do you have any, um, success data metrics that we can kind of, kind of come into that?
Yeah, so, so we track chronic absenteeism, right? As one of our district indicators, we also track attendance, we do it by school. I do think, though, that it is important to reference the context that we're in. And we're referencing a context where, um, kids were out of a physical building of school and out of the practice of doing school for about a year and a half to two years. And so what we have seen is also there, there is a process of realizing, oh, wait a minute, that is where I'm supposed to be again, that makes some of the data now. And that's why I referenced the spike, right? So spike meaning it was lower before, right? So there were things that were working. And now, given where we find ourselves post-pandemic or mid-pandemic, but back in person, um, it's going to require, um, a different set of engagement techniques. But I think it's important to realize, um, that what defines a successful intervention now is in a different context of what defined a successful intervention previously, only because of scale, right? We know certain things like personal connection still work. We know that, um, again, the whole having community school coordinators makes a big difference when you're particularly in our schools with concentrated poverty because of the holistic approach of what's going on with the family. So I, I, I would say that I'm not sure the spike is because things were not effective. I think the spike is because all of society, including frankly, um, if you talk to some of our pa- some of our principals, like parents were, were trying to process this, right? So what does it mean to get help for adults in a child's life to also be able to re-engage is also at a much higher level now than it was two years ago.
Sure, and I wonder what the data would look like over a five to 10-year period? I mean, truancy is not something that we are just now experiencing in Baltimore City. It's, uh, you know, I'm, I'm speaking not only from the pandemic, but more longer-term approach. And so that's why I'm asking about success, success metrics over that five to, you know, five to 10-year period in comparison, not, you know, taking out the.
What we know is when we have people, when there are resources to have people focused on attendance and focused on making those connections to kids and follow through at the school level, our, our absentee rates go down and our attendance rate goes up. When funding goes away, which it did five, what?
Yeah, five.
When did I come in seven years ago, right? When funding goes away, schools cannot afford to have people on staff who go out, like we had about, what, 18 people this summer, and that is all they did. So when we're talking about what do resources buy, resources are not everything. You still need to have effectiveness, you still have to have the connections Dr. Bunley talks about all the time. But what we have seen is when you can devote adults to finding and connecting with kids and families, those, the rates of the bad stuff go down and the rates of the good stuff go up. When you pull the support, again, you can't ask a school to do everything with minimal staff. So that's one piece that you would see if you were to look over, you know, a 10-year span. We've nev- I mean, let's be clear, we've always had work to do since I arrived in Baltimore City in this area. But you can watch the fluctuations, um, parallel to that.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. And I assume that there is like strong connections with Doc, you know, and, and also not only just with, um, you know, BPD, some of the other community-based organizations, um, related to this issue. I just want to really, really hone in that it's, you know, with, it, it, it has been, it is, and will be always an issue. And so I always want us to keep that in the framework of our mind that if our kids are not in school, like you said, they're, you know, doing other stuff that it, that's not, um, that's not healthy. And so we need to really tackle that issue. My second question has to do with, um, the Department of Transportation. Were they invited to this hearing? The only reason why, the only reason why I bring the Department of Transportation up when we're talking about chronic absenteeism, when we're talking about buses, when we're talking about transportation issues of kids going to and from school, I think I would assume that they would be one of the main partners, um, here at this meeting discussing some of the strategies that they have within their agency, um, to, to address some of the issues such as chronic, chronic absenteeism as well. Mr. Chair, was the Department of Transportation invited to this hearing?
Hmm, no. It actually wasn't in the recital.
Thank you. I'll save my questions for, for the next round.
I just have one question, and I, I want to ask this question because I get nine of those calls at my office. People won't leave their name, they don't feel comfortable. And one of the questions was, and it's not just for the Police Department, for all the agencies, because I know this is tough. What conversation has the Police Department, not just the Police, all these other agencies had in reference to instituting a curfew for 17 years old and younger? I know we tried that before, it takes a lot of staffing. Can the agency here, can you talk about that kind of? One, has there been a conversation? Will there be one? And how can we implement? I know it takes a whole lot of work, a lot of agencies, maybe a lot of funding. So Commissioner, if you can just start off and then the other agents can respond after Commissioner.
There have been conversations about curfews. I've had that asked to me a- all, all across the city in all nine districts. The issue becomes how to enforce it. Who is responsible for the care of the person, the police officer? Do we have a facility to bring them to that is not a penal facility or a jail? And who are the employees inside of that facility? And how are, are we bringing the person there? Are we looking for a parent, a guardian? What's the timeline? So it becomes the, the logistics of it, the personnel, the enforcement of it. And how, how do we do that with very limited resources and balancing the limited resources with curfew enforcement versus all the other issues that you know we deal with?
I, I just want to be clear, I, I know you, uh, from a law department, from a Police Department, you used the word enforcement, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm just talking about how do we implement something like, and I know when you.
When I use the word enforcement, I'm not talking about arrests. How do we, how do we execute?
Right, that's why I want to make sure we be clear on that. Thank you. Any, um, other agencies, please, could you respond?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I, first, again, I want to go back to Director Jackson's orientation. And what this is, is, and this is really going to be our best chance with the myriad of issues that I see, that we've seen in our city. Our school system has not, we, we have in Baltimore City put the onus of our children's success on the school system and its personnel. And everybody has to be a part of that process. What I love about where we are right now is that compulsory education has worked because at least most of our. is that compulsory education has worked because at least most of our children get a chance to drop out of school. So that means that they go. But they don't stick and stay because the village has not done an excellent job. But this oppo, this is an opportunity right now because Dr. DeRosa talked about the cultural competency. You're never going to be able to see that if you are not on location being active and, and allowing all of the people to happen, so, to be there to do what needs to be done. And, and, and Dr. Santalisa's reference, and, and she's a scientist, a social scientist and an educator, we have to be data-driven, no doubt about it. Quality-connected relationships seems fuzzy, but it begins to be a science when you have a child who has been out of school for 20 days, and you have an adult, or adults who have the proper relationship with that child, and then you can count that they've been present for 20 days. That's the science of counting, right? So, I mean, this is a great opportunity we have. I'm just, we're talking about scaling, we're talking about taking on the schools where the myriad of issues are there, and the village now, and not pointing our fingers at each other and let's go do this because we had a, we're in a place of urgency right now, and we see it with all of our youngsters that we are dealing with. Right now, we're getting ready, I believe, put the squeegee process to bed because we are doing collaborative work in the city. It's getting ready to be done after 50 years. So I, I'm just saying, this is a great opportunity. I'm excited and, I'm, but I do need to leave, Mr. Chair, and I just want to know if I have your permission to leave.
Sure.
Okay, thanks, sir.
I'm, I'm only saying that, and I'm saying that how do we help our young people that actually are still out in the street, 17 years old, don't exactly have no direction, no family support? And that's why I'm asking this question. I get a lot of it. And I'm glad that Commissioner Harrison mentioned it. I know from that point, enforcement, I am not talking about enforcement, because we know that never worked. But how do we, even if we talk about a curfew, how do we have a bigger conversation and put all those agencies together, put the funding together to make sure those young people on the street that are 17 years old, they need some help? And the only way we're going to help them is we're going to have to have something, when we bring them to a location, provide some support services to them. And I only want to bring that conversation up because I get a lot of phone calls, and Commissioner, you already said you hear it all over the city, and I thought maybe we can have some bigger conversation with all these agencies that probably we could make that work, looking at funding and what agencies need, maybe do one in West Baltimore, one in East Baltimore, and just use that as a model of how we address our young people after 17 years old and they out in the street and have no direction. Because we have to help our young people in this city. And the only way we're going to help them, we have to address that, having those type of agencies working as a model in East and West Baltimore to address curfew. When, when we bring them into those spaces, we have to have the right agencies and support system for them and their families. So thank you for that. I appreciate it. Councilman Glover, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't really have questions. I do want to say, you know, thank you to all the agencies that are here this evening. And I just kind of want to big you guys up. I listened to what Dr. Bunley just said recently. You know, it takes a village, and I do see the village. Like, um, it's been a very long time since I've had an opportunity to like witness what I'm saying today and like what Dr. Atalisa was talking about early on, how the partnership is there. And I'm listening to Monty, and the reason why I'm saying is because I see it in my district. They mentioned Fort Worthington Elementary School. And I see how the school system, even the Baltimore City Police Department over here in the Eastern District, and I've seen how Monty, I've seen how, many of you guys know Uncle T. I see how he's in the community, he's in those schools. And I'm also seeing how these parents are starting to be more engaged. And it's because it takes the village. I mean, it takes all of us being hands-on and meeting everybody, you know, at their needs right where they are. So I just want to kind of give a big ups to these agencies because I know it's tough, and it's not going to happen overnight, but you guys are doing a tremendous job. And I'm saying it because I am there to witness it firsthand in my district at one of my schools. Principal Barry is doing outstanding job. We're bringing the community together. Again, I, I just want to big you guys up. But I do have one question, and that's, do we have, Dr. Santalisa, do we have like truancy officers that are working for Baltimore City Public Schools? And if we do, are they out and about, like doing, you know, doing the work right now? Or we in the process of hiring? If we are hiring, are we doing a great job at promoting to get these, uh, uh, truancy officers, you know, here in our schools? Or are we, you know, allowing the social workers with these mental health groups, these like, I guess you want to say rehabilitation counselors or whatever? Or we have, are they the ones that are responsible for helping our young people get into school? So can you kind of like help me out a little bit with that conversation?
Sure. No, thank you, Councilman. No, we don't actually have a kind of full troop of truancy officers that I, I too hear in conversations with community, you know, city schools alum who will say to me, why don't we bring back the truancy officers, right? So they can, you know, bring, kind of bring students back to school. I think what we, we are doing is working with school teams to have more outreach. We are, we do, we do have central staff who, when absenteeism gets to kind of a critical point, right, where it keeps happening over and over again, that is when we, we actually do refer and might take kind of more, you know, a more, I don't know, disciplinary approach. But we, we try to have that be literally the final, kind of final entry point. It's not so much, we don't, we don't really have, you know, school psychologists. Some social workers do actually go out and do that, but a lot of it is really community school coordinators, it's school teams. If you look at Tench Tillman, which is a fabulous, I know it's not in your district, but it's a fabulous
It's my district, it's my district.
Is it? Is it in your district? Great. I'm glad I hit the right school.
Yeah, I'm familiar with, yeah.
Right. So you know, Tench Tillman has been cited at the state level, right, for its outreach work and its ability to, so we, we tend to rely on that. And then when we get to the point where schools say, look, all of that outreach just isn't yielding anything, then we have folks centrally who take it to the next level. But, but we really try to do a lot of that from a community-based approach, from the connection with school, school teams. And some schools are incredibly proficient at it, but we've also had schools this summer that we've had to take through training about how, how you, you know, how you do it effectively, like a Tench Tillman or a Fort Worthington, which are two really great examples. Does that answer your question?
It, it does, it does. It's there. But, uh, one other thing is, uh, I'm also excited at the fact that, I know the last time we had a conversation, we did talk about social workers and, you know, it's a need across the entire country. And I do want to say that I know some social workers personally that, uh, you guys have get an opportunity to. And, and you got to really want to love to do the work that you do, because these individuals, like you said, at just kid's school, two of them have to do private practice. And you have to really have the heart for these kids to even want to come to the schools in order to do the work. So I know personally two social workers that are going to two of your schools that are clinicians. I mean, they have their seat. They can go anywhere they want to go, but they chose to be right here in Baltimore City. So, you know, a big up to whatever you guys are doing to promote and get these social workers to work in Baltimore City Public Schools and not go outs, elsewhere. So again, thank you for the work that you guys are doing. Uh, thank you for the village that I do see here today. And I just want to say, you know, whatever we can do, whatever I could do personally, to continue to help expand this village, like I am, I am here for you guys. So again, thank each and every last one of your agencies that are here today because I'm actually seeing the work get done, especially over here in my district of District 13. So again, thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Cohen, I know you've been waiting a long time. Appreciate your patience, but I just got one question for our CEO. School safety can also be compromised from outside threats. Parents and teachers are worried about school shootings in wake of recent events. Can you explain how students and staff will be protected from external threats like shootings?
Yeah. So one of the things that in the, in the meeting that Chief Davis referenced, where we actually got feedback from principals about this particular issue, and it really was around kind of external threats, and, and some with internal pieces as well, you know, things we could do with our code of discipline. One of the things that's really surfaced is putting together a plan for, and a, and an actual kind of schedule for the, the kind of physical plant improvements like external access to the school building. And that was one of the things that principals talked about, was not, you know, a number of principals said to me, I actually am fine with the kids that are inside, that's not my concern. My concern is prop doors left open and then literally leaving the school exposed to external threats. So one of the things that we've done is, and we're starting with, high schools is really doing an assessment of what is that kind of the best kind of lock or security system. We're researching, working with Council of Great City Schools and other large urban school districts to say which of those systems are, are best. We also heard loud and clear from a number of our school principals that the, you know, screening for weapons coming into the school building was taking too long in the spring. And so we are piloting more expedient ways of, that are less intrusive for young people, but frankly, have been in place in a number of urban school districts for quite some time. But we, we heard loud and clear we, we needed to do that. And then frankly, and I, I walked with three high school principals this week, new high school principals, and they all talked about the visibility in different places physically in the building, right? And so how do we make sure that, for example, if a door, you know, if a door is open from the outside, there's at least an alarm, right, that, that alerts staff in the office to be able to go to the cameras, be able to partner with school police and be able, be able to respond? So that's, you know, the technology, the work with the physical plant, being able to know that, that you have secure borders, for lack of a better term, as well as the long-term investments that we're going to need to make in cameras. We've, we've benefited from some state investments in safety, but again, the reality is that those purchases all require money. And so we've got a plan together very much, you know, we're putting one together very much like the AC, right, that these are the schools we're going to be working with over a period of time, but we're starting with high schools right now.
Thank you. Councilman Cohen, thank you for your presence. I appreciate it.
Not, not a problem. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to all the agencies for this work. Want to begin by just agreeing with Dr. Santalisa that I think children across the country, not just in Baltimore, are hurting, but we're seeing it in our city too. And I would argue that we are in the throes of a pretty serious mental health crisis. Fortunately, in Baltimore though, we are pioneers and national leaders in both trauma-informed care and restorative practices. One data, I shared at previous hearings, but I think it bears being brought up again and again and again, is that between 2016 and 2019, 15 city schools underwent a deep dive in restorative practices through Akoben, the Holistic Life Foundation, and some other organizations. Institute for Education Policy at Johns Hopkins found a 44% decrease in suspensions between this period for those 15 schools. And they also found a corresponding increase in school climate. I've really appreciated the back-and-forth, Dr. Santalisa, Chief Davis, appreciated the briefing that you gave to me and a few of my colleagues, as well as the letter that you all wrote. However, I am somewhat concerned that we across the district have, if I'm, if I'm reading the letter right, 53 total student wholeness intensive learning sites. Some of those are restorative, others more social, emotional. Given the very profound mental health crisis that we're all experiencing, I want to know when we will expect to expand that number? And sort of going back to the idea of equity and making sure that our most vulnerable schools, our schools that need the most support are included, I'm curious sort of how we're going to get to the place where we truly are a restorative practices district, where all of our schools, and particularly our schools that struggle the most in terms of behavior, in terms of the way children are treated and the way children behave, when are they going to become part of that 53 student wholeness intensive learning sites?
Thank you, Councilmember Cohen. And yes, you referenced the extensive back-and-forth we've had around this subject. Just a little bit of history on background with the 53 schools, right? That is how we started the blueprint that was mentioned a little bit earlier as well. And how we really kicked off wholeness in Baltimore City Public Schools was really to start off with those intensive schools. But the truth of the matter is, is that when COVID hit and when other needs presented itself, it was really all of the teachers virtually who were trained around restorative practices. And so when we say that we are a restorative practices district, it's way more than the 53 schools. It is all of the schools that, and all schools have advisories and morning meetings that incorporate restorative practices in there. All of the teachers, as I mentioned, had training when we went virtual because they know they had to make deeper connections with students. And then even this year, right, this week is the week that teachers return. And part of their development, and part of what they've gone through, is a lot of wholeness work, which extends to, to restorative practices. So when we say we are a restorative practices district, I think it goes well beyond those 53 schools and is really incorporated not only in the things I've mentioned, but in our code of conduct, like I said, in, in morning meetings and advisories, and really across the district.
Chief, I really do appreciate that. And, you know, big shout out to all of the teachers going back to school this next week. Incredibly challenging time to be an educator as we see a national shortage and folks dropping out of the workforce. So all the love to all of our city schools' teachers and staff generally, and to the folks that work at North Ave as well. I would push a little bit though, on, I, I, I think training all teachers is, is great, but I do wonder about depth and school culture and climate overall. And just knowing that this is a model that requires pretty significant fidelity. And so wonder about, do we have plans? And, and again, understand that everybody is getting some, you know, some part of training and the work. But do we have plans with groups like Holistic Life Foundation, Akoben, you know, others that have been nationally recognized that are doing great work here in Baltimore to expand the intensive work within schools?
So, so one of the things that, that I would say, and Chief can certainly add on to this, is that because we have a deep focus on frankly nurturing school cultures, it's one of the things I led with, with principals last week. I led with it with every teacher that attended on Wednesday session, so I guess yesterday. I think that to just narrowly define that you have to work with this agency, right, or this organization in order for it to go deep, really, really under, you know, really undercuts the idea that there are principals who actually are going deep with this. I think what we are trying to do is to create the opportunities for schools that say, and there are schools that do, and there are schools who did kind of the deeper training, who are, who are investing the school-based dollars with the money that flowed directly to schools, to be able to say, for us, as you noted, Councilman, this is a priority. We are still struggling in this area to actually accelerate that work as part of where they are placing their resources because schools are in different places. And so I think part of, you know, part of the push that I think you rightly note is kind of where does the depth come? What I would say is that that in and of itself is equity, right? Because again, equity is not same. Same means every single school in the district must work with Akoben, they must do it this way, they must have, you know, this many coaching hours. And that has not worked for us. What has worked is to take each school, see where those schools are, see where the strengths in those schools are and where the gaps. And we frankly have a lot of principals See where the strengths in those schools are and where the gaps, and we frankly have a lot of principals who say, yeah, actually, now that I have these extra dollars. I do want an onsite coach, right, to help us real-time, to your point. Beyond the training, um go in depth and I think that's what um that's what we're continuing to do and I think that's why Chief is saying. You know, to just count the number fifty-three schools is not capturing um frankly, the depth and the richness with which. We are asking school leaders to take and assess where their school culture is and positive school culture, which we have also been pushing. And really developing and honing in with our principals, absolutely restorative practices and a restorative approach. Is an essential element to that, but it's not everything, right? We know from our student survey data. Um that there there are other pieces that young people want to see in their school settings to say, this is the place where I'm known. This is the place that I'm cared for and restorative practices does a lot of that, but in and of itself, it's not everything. So we're still. Looking at again, to your point, the data of where it's needed, but but we're not now saying every single school. In city schools must do the exact same thing with the exact same partners. I think the additional resources is providing the opportunity. To up those hours and up that support and we're seeing it in the decisions that are, that schools are making. In where they place their dollars, we're also seeing it to be, to put it directly in accountability conversations, right? So if your data is not moving, right, in a particular area, um what might be some other training and supports that you need? And that that's an accountability discussion, but I just want to be real clear that our goal is not to say a hundred and seventy schools have gone to training with. Partner A, B, or C in the same way um in order to say we're fully a restorative district. We're pushing to be a fully restorative practices district with the goal that we have a hundred and seventy-seven, I think we have now. Schools that are positive nurturing school cultures and that have the level of support they need in particular areas. But yes, the additional resources are helping to up that, but I just wanted to be clear, that's not my goal. I'm not going to sit here and tell you. Hundred and seventy-seven schools have had twenty hours of coaching with Accoben and now we are a restorative practices district. Um but what I am saying is our goal, our North Star, is every single school in this district. Needs to have nurturing, caring adults, right, that support young people, that develop relationships. And give young people the tools they need to resolve conflict, absolutely positively, but to be part of. A real community, which we know from the research over and over and over again. Is the single determinant of whether a young people is gonna, a young person's going to connect to school.
No, I appreciate that and just to be clear, I'm not suggesting any one vendor over the other. We have nominal folks. Positive School Center does great work, Elevate, we have all kinds of incredible partners. What I am seeing though is that what I'm interested in. Um, you know, given that point, Dr. Santalisis, I guess to sort of reframe my question.
Councilman, Councilman, you got two questions. It's gonna be a side conversation, you can have it up with the CEO. We have people went and do some public testimony, so thank you.
Yep, so this is my follow-up, Mr. Chair. So what is the evaluative criteria for how a school, um to your point? Not every school is going to get the twenty hours with any one vendor, but how are we evaluating fidelity as it relates to. Um this issue of wholeness and and restorative?
Yeah, I I and I am going to try to, in respect to um to the to the chairperson, that that I think. One of the pieces that we have, we have done is outlined and and Chief Davis can speak to this. Uh what are the components, the actual components of school cu- culture and it's and that's why I said it's more than one thing. That makes a nurturing school culture and what uh the what Chief is doing is having conversations with principals where they're doing assessments. With their supervisors around, where are we on all those indicators? There are some indicators that are great, right, that a school is knocking out of the park. But there are others where they're kind of weak and so the ability to use those elements to then have discussions. Um across a hundred and sixty-four schools, thank you, Allison, I'm still thinking we have a hundred and seventy-seven, a hundred and sixty-four schools, right? Is 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 part of that differentiated conversation, but do you do you want to add something to that, Chief?
No, that's right. Um we have cu- culture and climate domains that school, we have some that we focus on like relationship building and consistent practices across a school. But there's a number of domain domains that schools get feedback on and have to improve upon. Um it's very individualized because some schools might be better in in a specific domain than another. But we do that, uh we've done that now for two years, will continue in this vein and restorative practices have a have a place in that, right? They have a place in those domains, they have a place in how well, say, we're doing morning meetings and advisories, are those really good places? Where students' voices can be heard and we'll take a look at that on a school-by-school basis and give them that feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you. I I appreciate that. Um.
Our Councilman, thank you.
That was the end of my, that was the end of my first question, Mr. Chair.
You had two questions, Councilman.
No, that was a follow-up, Mr. Chair.
Okay, it was a follow-up. Okay, go ahead, you can proceed.
All right, thank you. Um to both city schools and Monty. Curious how we're thinking about in this conversation around student safety, um how do we think about centering student voice? I know that um student leadership is a big part of Dr. S. The Blueprint, so just curious when we're thinking about safety. I'm curious how we're pulling young people into these conversations.
I'm happy to start. Thanks for your question, Councilmember. Four agencies I think come to mind for me right out of the gate uh that are doing work uh in the space of making sure that youth voice. Uh is centered in our conversations around their safety and I'll let them uh jump in with specifics, but. What comes to mind immediately is um MachFIS or the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. Which not only has a children's cabinet uh that meets routinely to talk about diversion opportunities. To talk about educational challenges and safety challenges, but also has a. Black men and youth of color cabinet. I'm I'm getting the acronym wrong, but essentially it's a, it's a young man and um. Boy cabinet that focuses around the experience of black and brown boys in Baltimore City and obviously they spend. A lot of time having conversations um and engaging with young folks directly around what safety looks like and feels like to them. The second agency that comes to mind, obviously, is Dr. Bunley's agency, the Mayor's Office of African-American Male Engagement. Who every single day, um probably in multiple moments throughout the day are engaging young folks directly and centering. Their voice around what it means to feel safe um in Baltimore City. I also believe that that agency regularly participates. Um as Baltimore's conduit into um my brother's keeper. Um two other spaces that come to mind, the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, and I think that we think a lot about them through the lens of. Employment development, but if you've ever visited um the Yo Center in West Baltimore. There are many and plenty opportunities that are taken advantage of by folks like Marvin McKenstry and other folks that are there. To engage deeply in conversations around what safety looks like and feels like for uh black boys. Um and men here in Baltimore City and last but certainly not least. Monty itself as an agency is engaging in these conversations and will be deepening its engagement in these conversations. I personally go to Baltimore City Public Schools when they are in session. I think at the end of the year last year, I was at. Um Hazelwood Elementary Middle and then also at um Calvin Rodwell, talking to eighth graders. Um both um those that identify as um female and those that identify as male or men or women. Um and having conversations with them about what safety looks like and feels like in school. Very real candid conversations about social media and how it plays out in school. Um we've also seen the mayor participate regularly in having conversations with our young folks in. School and as recently as just a few weeks ago at his youth summit and so I would offer. That there are many ways and in many spaces that opportunities are taken regularly to center youth voice around public safety. And would be happy to have any of my partners speak to their role specifically.
Councilman? Is that it? You don't have, not another question, but do you have any follow-up?
Uh no, thank you.
One thing I just want to add, uh under the leadership of Dr. Santalisis, we developed. Working with uh a group called Youth is Resources, which is a youth-led organization. They came up with a school police report card, which we review regularly, we meet with them regularly and the Algebra Project. Which is also a youth-led organization and also CASA, who uh we meet with. And they've done uh training for our police officers, so I just wanted to just add that and then and we look at that seriously. Um and we look at the results and we've actually made adjustments uh based on our deployment, based on. How our personnel treat the students in the school. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you Director Jackson and, you know, would just push all of us to keep centering student voice in conversations about student safety. Um thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Um so we're going to go to public testimony and I believe our first person is Danielle Brown. Danielle Brown. Markeia Jackson. Anyone that called in, could you use the raise hand function so we can identify you?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interject. Um if we have additional questions for agency, should we just send them via email, written?
Well, we, this not going to be the first hearing, but if you want to do that, that's fine.
Okay.
This is not going to be voted out, so we'll be having more hearings to to address this issue. There's no raise hand functions and I'm looking at the the school safety and addressing youth violence about. All those questions kind of been added together and I want to just um. Thank um Director Jackson, the agency for your um thorough reports. And the reason why I want to do that, because the community need to know exactly what's happening in the city and addressing our youth violence. The city council need to know that because we wanted to make sure we can put these agencies together. Sit in the same room and talk about a solution for our young people because we can always talk about what the problem is. But we had to talk about how we address the problem, but put some solutions together. So I just want to personally thank everybody. I also want to make sure on the next hearing. We will have our youth commissioners here so they can also testify because that's their peers that they deal with every day. So I want to say this meeting is in recess. Thank you so much.